If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Jim Batson. Cara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Kara Drumkey.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
We know it, everybody present except for our colleague Jim Batson, and we would like to wish everybody a very happy Diwali for everybody that celebrates. And we will quickly review the agenda. At the top of the agenda, as always, we have our communication, including an invitation for public comment and any emailed public comments that we might have. Our student school board representatives will give their reports. And we will share some good news. Following that, we will have approval of the consent agenda. These are items that have been discussed extensively in committee, and these are routinely approved by the board with a single motion. Can I ask, are there any items that board members wish to pull out of the consent agenda this evening?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Items for action. The first four items I will take us through. Then I will turn it over to our Chair of FNF for items E, F, and G. We are looking forward to two presentations tonight, one on our academic performance data from Dr. Sanchez regarding PSATs, ACT, and AP results. And then our results of a social and emotional panorama survey that was administered this fall and its comparison to the results in April. For information, we have our superintendent's report from Dr. Herman. We'll go around if we have any board comments or events that members have attended. We will not have an ISB report this evening. Do we have a report from SEDOL?
No, not this evening.
Okay. And then for other reports, we will have a brief update from me as the liaison to the D-128 Foundation for Learning. We will review future agenda items. We do have closed session to discuss pending litigation. Following that, we will come out back into open session. No further action will be taken, and then we will adjourn. So getting started at the top of the agenda, do we have anybody here wishing to make a public comment? Going once, going twice? Do we have any emailed public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Then I'm going to turn it over to our esteemed student school board representatives for their reports.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hari Jan. October has been another very eventful month, including the month of September was homecoming, where a record number of students attended. Students came decked out in their best gear and all had an incredible time. When asked what part of the dance was their favorite, a majority of students expressed their love for the photo booth, where they were able to gather up their friends and take silly photos together. Junior Parab Aurora showed some love for the confetti and said that the dance gave some, it gave the dance some possess. The Cougars had their last football game of the year on Friday, October 21st, and safe to say, they came prepared. Every turn of the, every turn of the head, all you can see was pink, pink, and pick. The Cougars were able to secure a win against Maine East, concluding the season strong. For the underclassmen, this year's football games gave them a true insight on the school spirit and fun of football games and left them excited for years to come. For the seniors, it was bittersweet. Senior Kale Wharton noted that as fun as it was, when he realized that this was the last one, he was very sad and thought that it was surreal that he wouldn't be a student of Vernon Hills High School the next time he attended one. On October 18th, the LMC had an author visitor, Samira Ahmed. Some English periods were able to attend her talk, where she gave perspective on her changing career and breaking stereotypes by being an Indian woman not pursuing a job from the STEM field, but rather following her gut and becoming an author. From the talk, students were able to understand that life is not a straight-cut journey and that the curveballs that may go through lead to paths that ultimately lead ones where we should be. Students expressed their appreciation to hear from an author of a minority group and were given a different perspective on a future job and how that should be determined by their passion for that job instead of some monetary value of it. Due to the state of the pandemic, the school year start has been a little different. There has been evident leaning towards the traditional start, and students seem to have a different perspective on COVID than before. Nurse Ms. Kelly noted that students don't seem very anxious about it and that the number of COVID cases, cases have certainly declined. She went on to say that for most students, COVID has come to be adjacent to a cold and the overall adjacent, overall attitude towards COVID shifted to be tranquil. Red Ribbon Week starts on Monday, October 27th, led by Spark, one of the prevention clubs at Vernon Hills High School. This week highlights the importance of living substance-free, forming positive relationships, and making healthy choices. Monday being Put a Cap on Drugs Day, Hot Day, Tuesday being Give What You Can Day, Wednesday Healthy Lifestyle Fair, and Thursday having all the students wear red. Exec Board Member Haley Kalanowski noted that Red Ribbon Week is especially vital to her because it is important for her to stay healthy and happy when involving herself in various extracurriculars. Also, the Healthy Lifestyle Fair is taking place on Wednesday of Red Ribbon Week, and Ms. Dillon noted that 26 organizations will be hosting booths in the foyer during lunch periods to promote coping skills, nutrition, physical activity, and the importance of reading. A lot has happened in the month of October, and there's more to come.
Good evening. Last month, I sought to shed light on student opinions regarding the school cafeteria. Since then, students on free meal plans have felt a shift in policy following an initiative led by Mr. Larry Varn. Comparing the experiences of students on free plans to those unpaid plans through the lens of economic, Mr. Varn focused of the increased limitation in lunch options. Through conversations with Quest, the percent of food items available to those on free food plans increased from 37% to 45%. The limitedness of food options had become a widely held concern among students in a survey shared at the board last month. While still leaving room to grow, efforts made by Mr. Varn have positively impacted Cougars. Mr. Varn's goal for the future is to further protect the discretion of individuals on such plans. By restructuring items only purchased or omitted by those on limited plans, students will have a less stressful mealtime experience. In other news, the influx of English-language students at Vernon Hills has exposed enormous impact of the program on its students and the necessity of dedicated staff members to students adjusting to a new environment. With many new to the country, EL teachers are, quote, "not only the academic well-being of our English-language students, but they're really responsible for their social-emotional well-being," per Ms. ML. Working, beyond working through a well-structured sentence, teachers like Ms. ML allow homesick students to gain comfort in their school and in their voice. Joined by school and district administration, board members, teachers, and counselors, EL students in Ms. ML's class could read their poetry or have a guest read their poetry in front of the class. She says that the students have been very skeptical of this, but you could see how proud they were when they heard their poem read to them, where all of a sudden they realized their stuff was really good. The Educational Life Skills Class sat in on the poetry readings and served the class snacks, with both classes coming together to decorate the room and do spontaneous personal introductions. Special moments like these can be credited to the incredible attention from school staff. Unexpected enrollment volume has led to full sections of Level 1 and Level 2 learners in the same classroom. Electives have filled up, requiring some EL students to take study halls, which don't provide the same language-driven environment as CTE or art classes. Access to health education is especially of concern, as new students may not have had access to similar education prior and may struggle with the vocabulary-dense curriculum at school and may be unable to enroll in the class through the few open sections. The district has supported English-language students by responding to the concerns of teachers through opening an additional science section, adding teacher aides, and making healthcare more accessible. Ms. Kelly from the nurse's office was happy to see gaps in physical and immunization requirements filled through the Ronald McDonald Program, which provided mobile medical access. Still, the need among students for increased elective and EL health and English classes remains to lessen the strain on staff and broaden opportunities for the students. Recent district measures provide an optimistic path towards continuing the unique experience VHHS has offered EL students, a path that remains necessary to, to adapt to shifting needs at our school. Finally, Vernon Hills High School has had the honor of having 23 students accepted into Illinois Music Education Association Ensembles. Following a competitive audition process, Vernon Hills Fine Arts students will not be few in number across ILMEA's choir, band, and orchestra. Congratulations to all those musicians, especially Hari, that I'm not picking favorites. Overall, Vernon Hills High School is seeing some good transition along with the seasons, and students can't wait to see what the winter brings.
November 1st is a quickly approaching date ingrained in the minds of uncertain and stressed-out seniors. It's the day that a bunch of college applications are due. When we finally ship off all our materials in hours and months' worth of essays to colleges who'll either accept or reject us, and that's a scary idea. For both Daisy Crisostomo and Jenna Pozlins, the prospect of college is a scary thought. According to a survey collecting the responses from 84 other VHHS seniors, I'm not alone in trying to make sense of the chaos and busyness of life. Over 35% of respondents said that they're struggling to balance both school and college apps. Now with procrastination affecting over 50% of surveyed seniors and becoming a more tempting alternative, stress seems unavoidable, especially as TikTok addictingly feeds us with entertaining and infinite feeds of stimuli, and the time between now and November 1st to fill the blank and demanding boxes of our application and to hit submit becomes smaller. But through it all, the school has persistently showed, shown support. In addition to the CRC, which about 75% of the seniors surveyed said they've utilized, we've also geared events and clubs to support students. This past Friday at VH Give, our hallways lightened up more than it usually does, with the lyrics of popular singers playing over the intercom inspiring students to both dance and sing from the English hallways to the girls' bathrooms. It was something small, but it lightened the mood of the hallways as exhausted students turned a little bit less exhausted. Even for me, the music had made my not-so-well day into a better one, which led me to think, what if we were to do this every month and make this a new tradition in an effort to lighten students' days? At VHHS, celebrating students has become essential, as clubs like Lasso, our Latin American Student Club, held weekly activities from Lotería to Piñata celebrations for Hispanic Heritage Month. For senior Jackie Gallegos, the club has given her an outlet to daringly and unapologetically be seen and for other students to see her and her culture. Even as a Latina myself, I'm able to learn about the unique traditions and cultures of others, whether or not my identity aligns with it or not. At school, that's what I and several of my peers have strived for, to raise those who may be underrepresented and whose identities may not be fully accepted. Just two weeks ago, eager students with ideas about how to make a more equitable space at VHHS came together with staff for the first time in an equity leadership meeting. Being there myself had left me empowered, but also with a large obligation. In just a 10-minute conversation, I heard students like seniors Ashley Shoemaker express their frustration about the AP US History curriculums, specifically how little she feels the course focuses on the decades of tragedy, loss, and destruction that Native Americans endured. As a Native American herself, it was both disheartening and disappointing that the destruction against them wasn't emphatically labeled as such and that there's not much time dedicated to learning about them and the full degree of their sufferings. Additionally, I heard some others who are a part of the LGBTQ community unpack their stories of struggle as they try fighting off microaggressions from both students and staff. Sitting there, listening to them, made me and the rest of my group that day wonder, what if we could have mandatory training sessions or lunch and learn sessions for staff and students that would educate them on microaggressions, implicit biases, student identities, and raise the voices of the LGBTQ community? A workshop could make the difference between someone who is unknowingly insulting and offensive and someone who's educated, aware and cautious of what they say or do because they gained that new perspective. From the Dare to Empowers Lake County Haven Drive to the Breast Cancer Awareness Dig Pink Volleyball Game to Yellow Ribbon Week to the hundreds of hours of service seniors are putting into NHS, what's become clear is that students are eager to make change, and every day, they're doing just that.
Hey, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. LHS has celebrated a great homecoming week this year. From the football game, assembly, and dance, everyone found an event they enjoyed. One of our newest additions to the homecoming dance this year was opening up alternatives for students who would rather hang out with friends in quieter spaces. For example, the library was open for students to come in and enjoy some board games and play some Mario Kart with their friends. The City Theater also played a Cars movie, which went perfectly with the theme All Roads Lead to Home. As the season of spirit comes to an end, Student Council and many other clubs are hard at work to prepare for the season of serving. Ms. Ulix, the Activities Director, says, "I'm excited for the transition from the spirit season to the surf season, and I invite the school community to participate in giving back during the next month." Some upcoming events include the canned food drive. Which will, this will be, it will be held during, it will be held throughout November. Classes will compete to see which grade will donate the most cans to Libertyville Township Food Pantry. They're also getting ready to knock on neighbors' doors and collect cans for the annual neighborhood blitz. Other clubs are also participating in our former Wish Project, in which clubs join to support families during the holiday season by buying presents for children. Surf season is off to an incredible start. With fall sports coming to an end, some exciting highlights come from our Pin Count Football Game, Swim Meet, and Volleyball Games. Students filled the stands on Friday to cheer on the Wildcats for their last game and enjoy the thrilling win while raising awareness and funds for breast cancer research. This swim team hosted an exciting meet and raised over $1,000 for the cause. We love seeing the Wildcats helping the community and creating a difference.
Fine Arts and Theater have been hard at work preparing for the Fall Musical Grease, which will happen nights of October 26th to the 30th. Senior Elena Derzinski says, "I'm so excited for my last musical at LHS, so make sure to come watch. We all can't wait to watch their wonderful performances and the amazing work of the cast and crew." Last week, in some other Fine Arts news, parents and students watched orchestra students perform for their annual Fright Fest concert, which showcased many student musicians' talents. This past Wednesday, seniors had off and were able to sign up for the College Resource Center to receive essay help from their English teachers and college counselors. As early action deadlines are approaching and stress is certainly building, it was definitely a great way to stay on track. Juniors took their PSAT and are hoping for great results, while freshmen and sophomores participating in a daring day. There, freshmen were able to learn about different electives that they could take throughout high school, while sophomores were able to explore a wide variety of career interests. They also had some guest speakers that could help them with, like, deciding more of their interests and some possible career paths. This week is Red Ribbon Week, which highlights the importance of health and wellness as students will learn about the negatives of substance abuse and how to help family or friends who might be struggling. For example, sophomores, juniors, and seniors will have the opportunity to attend an alcohol poisoning response training. I myself attended this training last year, and it was just a really great opportunity. And as we're all getting older, I'm really excited that LHS has provided this opportunity to students that might eventually allow one of us to help save a life. In Link Crew, freshmen will do an activity about the teen brain, hearing about how Link Crew leaders have navigated challenging social scenarios involving substances and diagnosed their barriers to getting healthy sleep. This week is incredibly important, as our annual LHS Illinois Youth Survey data reported that LHS alcohol rates have dropped significantly over the past eight years. So we really want to keep going on that trend, and we really want to keep building up the strong prevention culture that we've helped build. And the most stark data points, however, were the rise across all grade levels in depression symptoms and serious consideration of suicide since COVID-19. Therefore, we hope by creating a safe space for students to share their experiences and asking for help, these levels will begin to decrease, as well as as we're coming out of the pandemic and returning to normalcy, we'll be able to have a lot more of a strong community that might help people with any mental health issues that they might be facing. Thank you.
Very nice. I, I know that many of you try to stay throughout the whole meeting, but if you don't, we do have a section at the end of the meeting called Future Agenda Items. And I'm going to suggest that we have some follow-up to the board about some of the suggestions that were made. Specifically, maybe Dr. Varn might be able to talk to us about the cafeteria options. That's something I think the board might be interested to learn some more about. I also think it's been a while since we've had a presentation to the board about our programs for English learners, and that may be time to get an update so the board has, you know, current information on that. Finally, we'll look forward to any recommendations that Dr. G and the Equity Group might come up with. You know, it's an interesting suggestion about a microaggressions workshop. I don't know if that's something that's, that's feasible or that's something that will be recommended by the administration. But if so, the board will certainly stay tuned for that as well. Any other follow-up items from board members or questions we have for the student board? Okay, great. Excellent job. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I also want to compliment the students. That was actually one of the best student updates I've heard. And I, you guys, I can tell how much you checked in with your classmates and really got knowledge on the topics you were reporting on. And I really feel like your voices are at the table, so thank you so much. And I get to add to many of the wonderful things they shared with some additional good news across the district. The D-128 Foundation for Learning has announced the recipients of its ninth annual Alumni Achievement Awards. Bob Chikos, LHS class of 1992, and Danny Park, VHHS class of 2011. Bob currently serves as a special education teacher and head speech coach at Crystal Lake Central High School, where he's worked since 2008. Danny Park is the CEO and founder of RoboThink, a children's education franchise specializing in delivering robotics, coding, and engineering programs to curious young minds. They will receive their awards at the foundation's annual fundraiser, the big event, on Saturday, November 5th, at White Deer Run in Vernon Hills. And speaking of the big event, tickets are on sale now for the foundation, on the foundation's website, for the Foundations for Learning Annual Fundraising Event. This event is fun, and there'll be live entertainment by Chicago Dueling Pianos, a silent auction, and more. All proceeds benefit programs for Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School students. Please consider joining us on November 5th at White Deer Run. Vernon Hills High School senior Jeffrey Brahms and Libertyville High School senior Katie Hodg have been named this year's recipients of the DAR Good Citizens Award for their respective schools. The following Vernon Hills students were named recipients of the October Cougar Class Act Awards. Charles Carsten, Parab Aurora, Joseph Jarzbeck, Finley Lorenz, Lauren Bowers, Lucas Cudden, Ariel Smith, Alexandra Barden, Olivia Lawhorn, and Anaya Bindal. The following Libertyville students were named September True Wildcats. Sorrell Folk, Tiana Tillman, Mercedes Reyes, Nina Harandaz, Holden Codillo, Cicely Hamburg, and Katie Baker. And I think it was last meeting, we heard a presentation from Heidi Lechner about her international trip and her presentation in Vienna. Well, more good news about Heidi. She was named the 2022 Foreign Language Teacher of the Year for the Council of Teachers of Foreign Language, and that is a very big deal. So not only will she obviously represent us, well, across the state, she will now be eligible for the national awards. We'll keep you posted on that. And the students mentioned this, but I think I have a different fundraising total. The Dig Pink Girls volleyball match between Libertyville and Vernon Hills, again, raising money for breast cancer. Through their event, the team raised $2,700, so maybe that was with both teams combined. But again, it's a very great event for students to do together and for the community to provide that support. Okay, up next. D-128 and D-70 will collaborate and co-host a parent event on community safety, safety November 2nd at 7:00 PM in the Libertyville High School Auditorium. All D-128 parents are invited to attend, as well as all D-70 parents are invited to attend. The speakers will be April Obakowicz from Be Smart, which is a campaign to raise awareness that secure gun storage can save children's lives, will present on gun safety, and Bruno Diaz from the Department of Homeland Security will review the importance of threat assessments within our community and ways we can work together on safety. And at our IASB Lakes Division meeting held last week at Lake Zurich High School, our school board, D-128, was recognized with a School Board Governance Recognition Program, and it, yes, I'll read it, and then we can, then we'll do a photo or something. It recognizes effective school boards, and they understand that excellence in local school board governance requires full board commitment to obtaining the knowledge, skills, and abilities crucial for good governance. And our board certainly is dedicated for all of those things, so, yes, we received our plaque.
Yeah. And, you know, this is something that I'm especially proud of. It's a foundation that was laid by prior boards. And, you know, governance is not always sexy or exciting or dramatic. You know, we are elected officials, but I am incredibly proud that we have received this award because we have had a focus on good governance. And I'm really proud to be a part of this team, and I was really proud to accept this award with Dr. Herman and Casey Rooney and Jim Batson at the Lakes Dinner, so. Did we, do you want to, should we get a picture?
Wait for Jim.
Maybe we'll do it. Yeah.
Yeah. We'll wait for Jim.
We can wait for Jim, and we'll have this plaque over so it can be posted in the district office.
Perfect. And last, but certainly not least, October is National Principals Month, a month that honors principals for their significant impact on the success and well-being of our nation's students. And D-128 is proud to celebrate our principals and thank them for all they do to make Vernon Hills and Libertyville High Schools amazing places to learn and work. So thank you to John and Tom for being amazing.
The, the sun of quality public education rises and sets with you guys. You are among the best in the business, and you probably will get tired of hearing me say that I want to come back and be a student in D-128. Thank you for pouring everything into our, into our students, into our staff, into our buildings. Yours is a job that you have to live. It's a lot more than a job, and we, we recognize you, we see you, we appreciate you. Thank you.
You're here.
And that's all the good news for this evening.
Okay, so on to the aforementioned less sexy things, like approving meeting minutes and things that we already discussed in committee, like educational tours, our bills payable report. I am looking for a motion to approve our consent vote agenda, please.
Rooney, motion to approve the consent vote agenda as presented.
A second? Any discussion? Seeing none? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye. Great. Motion passes, and we will move on to items for action. First, on the list, item A, Board Policies, we have Second Reading and Adoption.
We're bringing Board Policy 420, which was Transfer Funds, and we're renaming it Fund Balances. We discussed this both our last two committee meetings and our last board meeting with the first reading, so we're bringing this for Second Reading and Adoption. So Board Policy 420, Fund Balances.
Great. Do we have a motion to approve Board Policy 420 Fund Balances renamed?
Carmichael, so moved.
Thank you. You have a second?
Drumkey, second.
Great. I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to calendar proposals. We have a proposed amended 23-24 school calendar, and I believe I'll turn it over to Dr. Sanchez to take us through that.
Yes, so we have here the calendar for the next two years. We met, and we were very thankful that Ms. Rooney was there. She has a lot of knowledge, at least that I don't have, and so she was able to share that with the committee. We did take some of the feedback that we got from the community and moved the start of the school year back a little bit, and so all students will be back on a Monday in both of these calendars. We've also added additional teacher induction days to that week before it, so we'll have teachers here who are new teachers for every day that week. And we also moved the institute day that we had scheduled for Labor, right after Labor Day weekend to the spring. It was just a very quick turnaround for those of us that we had to get it together. And we also accounted for Eid as well in those next two calendars. So we will have an institute day in the fall, and then we'll have another institute day in the spring. Those are about all the changes.
Great. And that spring date, the institute day coincides with Eid, correct? That's the spring? No, that's the fall. No.
No, we didn't. We didn't overlap them. So.
I see.
Eid will have its own day.
Got it. Okay. And we did discuss that in committee. I apologize. Okay, great.
There was some question about which day. Did that get resolved?
So we 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 met last week, and I that's for this year's calendar. I reached out to four, actually five institutions, one in Displanes, one in Aprilville, two and one in Lombard, and there was one in Mundeline. And another, there was two in Lombard, actually. Two of them have full-time schools, and they are taking, like their spring break coincides with Eid. One of them is taking it the week of April seventeenth, the other one is taking it the week of April twenty fourth. There really wasn't a consensus as to the day. So then I figured I'd look at the cities with the largest Muslim populations and what their school districts are doing. So I looked at Dearborn, Michigan, and Patterson, New Jersey. And in Dearborn, Michigan, they're taking the April twentieth and twenty first off in observance of Eid. And in Patterson, New Jersey, they're taking April twenty first off in observance of Eid. So to talk about that, and that we are not able to add an additional institute day to our calendar this year. The maximum the state allows for, we could add a half day where students would be in attendance and half day. And then the rest of the day would be a school improvement day where we have to provide professional development for teachers. So I'm going to be meeting with the Muslim Student Associations to see if a half day would suffice because Eid starts at sundown on the twenty first. Once we meet with them, we'll come back with a resolution.
Great. Well, I certainly appreciate how responsive these, this amendment is to pushing the start of school back three full days as our community has requested. And also working with the students and doing such good work, trying to make sure that the Eid holiday coincides with, when we take it coincides with when it's being observed. So thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the twenty three twenty four proposed amended calendar as well as the twenty four twenty five proposed calendar?
Rooney, so moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Benjamin, second. Great. Any discussion? Hey, seeing none, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item C, Employment of Employees. It looks like we have.
These are items that were presented to, I'm presenting to you after PMP Committee. And so there's ESP, Educational Support Staff and Coaching Extracurricular Staff on there. There are two ESP positions that are new positions. So in regards to the questions on EL that were raised, our numbers in our Emergent Language Program at Vernon Hills have increased. We, at the beginning of the year, we made a couple of changes in one of our science classes in biology with our teacher, and that was due to the number of EL students in biology. And so that was in what we had already budgeted for with the extra certified staff, the contingency that we had in there that allowed us to expand the biology class. So what we're looking at is these two new positions in EL, our aides, Russian-speaking aide and a Spanish-speaking aide to help in our EL program. So those are, what we looked at was, we met with Vernon Hills team, a lot of us met with the team, and we had transfer students coming in over summer, and then we've also had transfer students coming in in the fall. Some of them students are Ukrainian students, so our EL members have gone up. And so this will address our immediate needs. We're also then taking a look at what we can do second semester in our EL program, and then also looking forward in the future. So there were some unexpected numbers of students that kind of came to us late summer, really late summer and fall. And so we're addressing these with these two new positions that we're asking you to approve. And then going forward, we're going to take a deeper dive into EL, what we can do, you know, second semester even, and then the following year. So.
Okay.
So I don't know if that helps with some of the stuff that was brought off also by our student board reps.
Absolutely. I think based on what they brought up, we're interested in learning more, and you're providing more information. So thank you.
And we, yes, and we're happy to do even more presentation on, you know, our EL program. And I know Sanchez can give a lot more information in what we're doing moving forward.
Okay, great. We'll leave that to your discretion. But in the meantime, can I have a motion to approve the employment of employees as presented?
Carmichael, so moved.
Thank you.
Colcarney, second.
Great, have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Great, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item D, Board Governance Handbook. Again, that sexy, sexy term, governance. It's very important to us that we remain focused on students in everything that we do. Quality public education is the foundation and the reason why good governance matters. And in support of that, we have developed a Board Governance Handbook. It's not policy. We have very strong policies in place already. This is not meant to change or supersede any of those policies. It works alongside our new member orientation and helps us all agree on how we are going to go about the good governance that we are committed to. So we have been working on this since August. Many hours of our team and the administration have gone into refining it. We would like to have a motion at this time to approve it, but our colleague, one of our colleagues who's returning from a fabulous Italian voyage, no, I'm not at all envious, did not have a chance to discuss it one final time with us in committee. So I think there are some good catches, some edits that I think Don is going to discuss with us. So before I ask for a motion, we're going to discuss those because I believe that if we agree that those are edits that we'd like to accept, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the amended Board Governance Handbook. So if we could have that discussion before the motion, that's why we're going to do it that way today. So.
Buonasera tutti. If you have the Governance Handbook open, page six is my first question, comment. Under Set the Direction for the School District, it says make.
It's actually page five.
Oh, oh, you're right. It is page five. Thank you. Make sure these documents are the driving force for all district efforts. That's the last one under Set the Direction. And I just wasn't sure which documents. If we go to bullet points earlier, it says generate review or revised direction-setting documents, mission, strategic plan, align goals, et cetera. So if the last bullet point is make sure that these documents are those documents, then we can just include that in the previous bullet point or in the make sure that these documents bullet point, we indicate which documents.
I think combining them makes more sense.
Yeah.
Because we're referring to these documents, we might as well move that sentence up to the documents to which we are referring.
Okay, and then.
It looks like we're having nodding. Is everybody's, looks like everybody's on board that? Yep.
Okay, then I think on page eight, although my pages are not spurring up for whatever reason. Let's see, it says meetings as a strategic leadership principle. That is.
That's page eight at the bottom.
Yep.
Okay, so it is actually page eight. Okay, so it says Board Meetings function to conduct district business in public, well-run, efficient meetings, model leadership, promote trust and confidence, and provide opportunities to demonstrate strategically moving the district forward and planning for the future. It, having read it out loud, it's easier for me to understand, but that phrase was just awkward to me in print. If it's not awkward to anyone else, we can just move on, but and provide opportunities to demonstrate strategically.
To write opportunities.
To demonstrate strategically.
Pause.
Right. So I don't know how to fix that because I'm not.
Any of our wordsmiths like to chime in?
Or if it's okay, feel free to say.
Do we, do we need the word demonstrate?
Yeah, I was gonna say you can just, and provide opportunities to strategically move the district forward.
Well, I think the demonstrating is that we're doing this work in public so that I do think the demonstrate does have, add some meaning to that sentence.
That's the whole purpose of this section is how we are acting in a meeting, and that's
Right.
modeling leadership, demonstrating, working together, moving the district forward. So I would leave the demonstrate. I would leave the action.
Okay, okay. Any other thoughts? I might leave that one as is for now. Page eight at the bottom.
Dan, Dan has no mic. Oh, there. He has a glitchy mic.
Just talk loud.
All right, I didn't know if you, if your, if your point was about public, does it, it would be helpful to add opportunities to publicly demonstrate? So I just, if the context is about public, would adding public.
Provide opportunities to publicly demonstrate strategically moving the district forward. Yes, that, that would help.
I like that.
Super. Thank you, Dan.
All right, that's good. I'm good.
Dan contributed.
Thank you.
Good. Okay.
Okay, now I'm going to page ten. It's under the Protocols for Role of the Board President. The protocols read, the role of the board president is to, and then it's confer, facilitate, model. And then the last one says, the board president serves as the primary spokesman for the board. If we could just change that, scratch the board president and just say, serve as the primary spokesperson so that all those action words are the same.
Good catch.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And then Board Meeting Agenda Items. I don't have the page written there, but it's further down on this page.
Page ten.
And then.
For those following along at home, it's page ten.
Page ten. So under the Principles, the second one says, a consent agenda allows the board to approve items together without discussion or individual motions. I would like to add the word additional discussion so that it's clear that we have already discussed these things.
So that's the second item.
Yeah.
Together without additional discussion. Yes. Okay. Another good catch. Thank you. Any comments on that one?
No, that's a good call.
Okay.
And I'm done.
Fantastic.
Grazie.
Thank you.
So I am not looking for a motion to approve the amended because we have not yet approved it. So it is not going to be amended. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the Board Governance Handbook with the changes as discussed.
Rooney, so moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Colcarney, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No, just thank you to everybody for all the work on them.
Yeah, it's really well done.
Really well done, and I was very pleased that we were, we were really all in step with our thoughts and the importance of it.
I've had.
Pleasure to work on.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I've had conversations with board members at other districts who were interested in the final product. So when this is done, it's going to be posted, but I would like to share it personally.
That's right. It will be posted on our website, and it's a perfect segue, thank you, to acknowledge that a lot of what we used was based on the work of the Santa Barbara Unified School District, and we gratefully acknowledge their contributions to our work. And we are glad to post it on our website so that other districts can do the same. I think having a Board Governance Handbook is a positive step for, for quality public education. So, okay, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I will turn it over to my esteemed colleague and Facilities and Finance Chair, Casey Rooney, to take us through the final action items.
Yes, we have a few. Okay. Moving on to item E, Estimated Tax Levy twenty twenty two. This is one of the most important actions we take as a board. The tax levy is how we fund our district, and being good stewards of taxpayer dollars while adequately funding our excellent district is of critical importance. So before I turn it over to Dan, I just kind of want to mention that we discussed this over the course of several meetings, committee and regular board meetings. So take it away, Dan.
Great. We got some slides put up there. All right, so this is the time for our levy season, so we're going to be talking about the estimate. This is going to be a much abbreviated version of what we talked about a couple of weeks ago. To Casey's point, this is not the first time we were talking about this. We have talked about this at least as early as February of twenty twenty two, when we talked about our financial projections. This levy was a key factor in those assumptions. Back then, we've talked about the, these numbers in our budget discussions that happened over the course of the summer. And we've talked about these at our last committee meeting just a week ago. So this is not the first time we are talking about this, but this is a critical time that we are talking about this. So just as a reminder for the district and everybody in our room, where we get our money, in, on average, you find in the United States, state and local end up splitting it, and the federal kicks in some money. In Illinois, it is more common on average to find the local community contributing more, about two-thirds, state contributing a quarter, and federal kicking in the rest. But at District one twenty eight, ninety-five percent of our revenue comes from our local community, and eighty-eight percent of our total revenue comes from property taxes. So this resource we're talking about is our most significant source of, of funding that the board has the opportunities to secure. One thing that we always are trying to balance between is inflation, and typically inflation has been around two percent, and we've been able to basically keep up with that according to this. But inflation at eight percent, which highest in my lifetime that I think, that's very difficult to keep up with. And so that we're going to be limited on that. The next thing, so keep that in context, I guess, for everything else that we're going to talk about. The next slide we'll see is an important consideration for this year, the Libertyville TIF. So downtown Libertyville has been in a TIF district for, since nineteen eighty-six. I won't go into all of what a TIF is, but that is, that TIF was supposed to expire in two thousand nine, but it was extended for another twelve years to December thirty first, twenty twenty-one. Part of that agreement is part of the money that was going to go to the TIF, seventy percent of that, they cut a check right back to us. So the TIF collects the money, but they've been giving us seventy percent of that money back. So really, we've been getting seventy percent of the money from the TIF for the last twelve years. And just for reference, the TIF check that we got last year was about a million dollars. And so we've been getting that, but because the TIF is ending, that million-dollar check disappears. We get one more this spring, and then that million-dollar check goes away. So what I'm saying is these taxes need to come in to replace that million-dollar check that's not going to be coming anymore. All right, so that's good for that one. The next slide is a visual representation of really what happens in a TIF. So TIFs can go for twenty-three years, and so what you see is really a chart showing when a TIF is established, the value of, of the properties there are frozen for the taxing district. So for us, the values of the downtown Libertyville has been frozen for us for the last thirty-five years. But those properties get more valuable. There's investment, people build houses, it becomes more valuable. As that gets more valuable, that's what's called the increment, and that is the value that goes into the TIF. So that value is fully taxed, and it goes into the TIF fund, which. And that is the value that goes into the tip. So that value is fully taxed and it goes into the TIF fund, which the village controls. Rather than to the district. And so, um, what happens is that year twenty-three, all of that shifts back so that the district. Is now able to tax the full EAV of those properties. And so that's typically what happens. And, um, in a TIF situation, uh, but of course, next slide, uh, this isn't totally typical. So. You have the original twenty-three years, which is very typical, and that's what happened for the Libertyville tip. But then the last twelve years has been a little weird because it got extended. But then we've been receiving seventy percent of that tip. So that imagine that blue triangle getting bigger. For the last twelve years, we've gotten seventy percent of that. Um, as a check coming back to us. So really the TIF has only been getting like thirty percent for the last twelve years. Um. And they've been using that to fund their infrastructure improvements for the last twelve years. All of that is essentially shifting back to the district. Um. So that's a unique, uh, it's a unique thing that's happening that is going to, is I think. Uh, very easy to confuse and misunderstand what's happening. Um, one more for the next slide, some more context, a little hard to see here, but. I've taken property tax bills. I won't tell you the exact addresses, um, but houses right across the street from each other. In that one's in the TIF, one's not in the TIF, very, very close in value. But you can see the one that's in the TIF that has been in the TIF since nineteen eighty-six, their last year's tax bill. You can see I highlighted the amounts that go to District one twenty-eight, so a few hundred dollars on the left. But then look what goes into the Libertyville TIF, twenty thousand dollars. Right? So it's significant portion of that money goes in now. What you have to remember is on the backside, we can get back from the village for that amount, but still that money does go to the TIF. Versus right across the street, what happens, what's been happening is there is no tip. And so all of those monies have been. Proportionately split between the taxation issue. Exactly what's going to happen is the. The property on the left is going to shift to look more like the property on the right, but each taxing district has to. Make their choice in terms of how they're going to levy their taxes, but I'm guessing. For most of those, it's going to, it's going to end up looking very similar to the one on the right. Uh, so it's not, it's not more taxes that they're going to pay, pay because of this. It's a shift in where the taxes go. So instead of the taxes going into the TIF. They're going to go back to all of the specific districts. Uh, we can go to the next one. All right. So when we're talking about the levy, there's the, the way we estimate this is an algebraic formula, but it's four variables. What's important to know. Is two of those variables we don't know and we won't know until the spring. But we have to do our levy by the last Tuesday in December. Uh, so we have to guess what those are. We get, we think are good guesses from the county. Uh, but we still have to guess. And so we, we have to account for some margin of error because of those estimates. We go to the next slide. Here is a high level summary of. The figures that are important for this levy. Um, so the inflation that is applicable for the. Uh, the CPI that's applicable for twenty twenty-two levy is seven percent. But we're capped at five percent based on the property tax law. The extension is the lesser of five percent or CPI, whichever is less, which I just said that. Uh, so we're kept at five for CPI. So that's a number to keep in mind. The estimate extension, which is the amount of money that I think that we're going to be approved to be able to get is about seven point five. Um, but what I'm, what I'm recommending is that we levy a seven point eight eight. To account for those two unknown variables that we won't know. Um, in the spring, that leaves about a three hundred thousand dollar cushion, which is similar to the cushion that we've had. At previous levies, um, over the last several years. Um, one point of context is for existing properties. Uh, EAV is the, the assessed value, the equalized assessed value of the property. So if you, if you have a house that's worth. Fair market value, three hundred thousand dollars, the assessed value would be a hundred thousand. Very likely the equalized assessed value would be a hundred thousand. Those values are increasing on average in the whole district about three percent. Um, so what does that mean for existing property, property taxpayers for District one twenty-eight? If your property value increases three percent. Then your taxes will increase about five percent. If your values increase more, if your individual property values increase more than three percent, then your taxes will likely increase by more than five percent. If your assessed value increases less than three percent, your taxes will probably increase less. Than five percent. They could even go down depending on the change of your assessed value. Um, so. And then for context, just so you know, the current environment that we're still in, the current CPI as of just this September, eight point two annualized. Um, so inflation's still high, CPI is still high. So. Uh, not, no, let's stay, stay back there. Okay, so. We're the levy, so what we're going to ask for is seven point eight eight. I think we're only going to get seven point five two, but we, we need a, we need a margin of error. If you're an existing owner and your assessed value changes by the average, which is three percent. Taxes will be five percent. People's taxes are not going up seven and a half percent. It's not what's happening. There's a shift from a TIF back to the other districts. Um, so I think it's, it's easy to be confused, but again, if you're existing owner, and especially if you're not in the TIF district. Your taxes for D one twenty-eight on average should go up five percent. Um. Not seven, not eight, they're going up five percent on average. Based on your change in value. If you live in the, if you live in the TIF district. Your taxes for D one twenty-eight go up because more money shifts into D one twenty-eight, but your taxes for the TIF. Go to zero. So it's just a shift. Your total taxes, even for people that live in the TIF, their total taxes. On average, if they, if they, if their assessed value changes by three percent, should change by about five percent. So those are the key figures is almost as simple as I can try to make it. Um, all right, now we can go the next one. And back to the point of this is not something that is new information to us. This is something that at least I've anticipated for a couple of years, but we've, we've talked. Even recently and very publicly about this at our February. Committee meeting when we looked at our long-term financial projections and. This levy that is essentially being recommended right now is built into those projections. Those are our long-term projections. So we are in a deficit this year. We knew that. Uh, but we knew based on our assumption that this would be about a one-year problem. One-year deficit issue. Uh, so. This levy is critical, in my opinion, to secure our district's financial stability. Uh, so, um. So I, I can't, I can't. I can't emphasize that enough. I, in my opinion, this is probably one of the most significant. Actions the board can take to, uh, either secure or not, uh, the district's stability financially. So. Um, we can go to the next one. Okay, so what are the next steps? So what we're, what we're asking for is an estimate for levy tonight. So for the law, what the law says is before the board can adopt a levy. You can't adopt the levy yet. Before the board adopts the levy, the board must, uh, no less than twenty days. Um, before final adoption, estimate the levy. Now, the law doesn't really say what estimate the levy means, but it, the strongest sense of the word is we could have you approve a resolution that's an estimate levy with a whole bunch of language. Uh, what I'm recommending for us to do tonight is to. Uh, simply take the documents that we have and approve an estimate levy tonight. You're not approving a levy. Um, that nothing gets filed. This is, this is so that our minutes can reflect the board has estimated the levy. Almost as strongly as I can think of for us to do this. And because it's more than a five percent increase. Um, we are required to have, uh, what's commonly referred to as a truth and taxation hearing, but it's really a levy hearing. And so the timeline for that would be prove the estimate tonight. We publish a truth and taxation notice in the paper on. Probably November second, third or fourth, there's a range. We have to do it. No less, no sooner than seven days before the hearing and no more than fourteen days before. So you have this one week window that has to get published. So if we're going to have our hearing on November fourteenth, like we talked about at our last meeting, which will be at seven o'clock here. Um, the truth and taxation notice would be in that paper on the second, third or fourth. Um, to have that, have that done. So there are. There's opportunity tonight to discuss it. There's opportunity at our November, um, I forgot to, I'm sorry, I forgot to put, um. Our November committee meeting on there. Um.
Which is the seventh.
Which is the, thank you. Uh, so that, that, that is an opportunity to discuss it as well. And final adoption would be scheduled for November fourteenth. I always try to schedule the levy. For adoption in November because it is due by law to the county. By the last Tuesday in December, the reason I do November is in case something really bad happens. And we cannot get a form. If for some reason I can't get four of you here on November fourteenth to approve the levy. We at least have December on the books to get you here. This has happened to me before. It came to a November meeting and for a variety of reasons, it could not get a form. Is that, it was at a different district. But I know it can happen because it has happened. So that extra month gives you a chance. If we slated until December. And four of you, we couldn't get four of you here. There's very little else we can do otherwise, special. Schedule a special emergency meeting and. That never makes me feel good when you're talking about a levy of this magnitude and this importance to the district. So I want. As much runway as we can, as much balance in terms of timing and public, public awareness as well. So. Um. Really, the last slide then would be. Uh, similar to last time, just a sample of the notice that will go in the paper. We can click one more slide. There we go. Uh, so that's a sample of what the notice is in the paper. The law is very clear about what can be in the notice and what can't be in the notice. And so that's essentially the notice sample that we're running with right now. And so there's a lot of. Things that, that are very. Particular about the notice requirements for this. So with that, uh, that's the information I have. Nothing, nothing has changed since we talked about this two weeks ago. Every single number is still the same.
This may be just be a sample there, but I'm just reading the line, this represents a seven point eight percent increase over the previous year. It's not seven point eight over previous year, right? I mean.
It's a, the levy, so the levy is the amount of money we're asking for is a seven point eight eight percent increase over the previous year. Yes. So we're asking for a seven point eight. I think we're only going to get a seven point five, but the law doesn't care. What you think you're going to get, the law only cares what you're asking for.
That seven point eight eight is, is capturing that new property as well. That's why that's. Bigger than the five percent.
Does that help?
What was our last year's though?
Last year's levy? Probably close to three, under three, it would probably.
That's what I remember. And that's why when you say, I guess I'm getting thrown by the language, but says it's. Seven point eight eight more than last year, which would, in my mind, I went three plus seven point eight eight, which is ten.
Uh, no, when it says last year, sorry about last, this is about tax year. So when it says here, it means tax year. So that'd be the twenty twenty-one tax year.
Okay.
Which would have been based on the one point four CPI, um, that we would have gotten. Based on those numbers, which is the roughly eighty-four million. We're asking for ninety million, which is the seven point eight percent. Round ones.
Okay. But our best estimate is that it's really only going to result in possibly hovering a five percent increase in what the district is asking to the taxpayer.
It is, it is, it is a five percent increase to existing owners in the district. Um. Relative to their change in property value. If their value goes up three percent, their existing, uh, their, their taxes should go up five percent. What's happening, what's happening to take it from the five to the seven point five is the shift. From the TIF back into the district. So again, those. Taxpayers that live in the TIF. The taxes that they, that go to D one twenty-eight will significantly, way more than.
Right, but it won't be a net increase to them.
It will not be on their bottom, bottom line.
Right.
Um, but again. We are only one portion, the tax bill example, we are.
That's what I'm trying to say. So from an individual's tax bill, we, the portion that goes to the district. We can expect to, I mean, I'm just trying to make it simple for people who are listening. The portion that goes to D one twenty-eight is likely going to increase by five percent. And then all the other taxing bodies, depending upon what they level, will also increase, but our portion will increase by five percent. To the average, on the average. Yeah.
Yes.
And last year it increased from the previous year about three percent.
One point four. You, were you, no, no, sorry, were you taking the taxes or the values?
The taxes.
No, the taxes last year on average went up one point four percent. The values have gone up three percent. So if everyone looks at their blue sheet, blue.
Blue.
Yeah.
It's blue.
The blue sheets, um, if those, if that assessed value has gone up three percent. Then your taxes will go up about five percent.
Okay. Okay. So we are looking for a motion to approve the estimated tax levy. In, we traditionally say the amount, correct?
Uh, we have never yet, since I've been here, approved an estimate levy.
Okay.
Um, so I think, I think what would, what would suffice is the. I would reference the year, the twenty twenty-two estimated tax levy. Again, this is just for us to document a legal determination that the board has estimated, which will then require the hearing.
Okay.
So I'm trying to keep, leave a very clear, I'm sorry to keep it, we're trying to keep a very clear trail.
Right. Mm hmm. It's important.
Transparent trail.
Absolutely. So we need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two estimated tax levy as presented. Any other discussion?
We need a motion first.
Motion, please.
Um, Hessel, I move to approve the twenty twenty-two estimated tax levy as presented.
Carmichael.
So, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I jumped in.
Drumkey, second.
Okay, motion passes.
Um, any discussion?
Any other discussion?
Hey, then we'll be looking for a roll call for that.
Roll call, please.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
There we go. Motion passes. Moving on to item F, Goodman Grants for, uh, Vernon Hills High School and Libertyville High School.
Uh, yeah, both high schools have received a grant from the Goodman, uh, Severn Goodman Center for many years. It's been about six thousand dollars a year at each school. That amount appears to be going up to eight thousand dollars per each school. And so they've sent. Contracts for us to sign, uh, these contracts. Uh, for two reasons I think are applicable for the board to approve. One, uh, we have. There's a law that requires if any contract that's going to generate more than a thousand dollars, um, board has to approve. This isn't really necessarily revenue generating, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's an agreement. So our attorney recommended. Be on the safe side and have the board approve it. And. Um, because it's a donation, uh, there's a large view that it's a gift and the board has a policy about receiving gifts and. You all said that you want to acknowledge gifts. So, uh, this is twofold why these are both in front of you. So different agreements, one for each high school. Um, because the, for Severn side, they really do it based on the high school. So that's why there's two agreements, one for each school.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the Goodman Grants, uh, for LHS and VHHS as presented.
So moved.
Kukarni, second.
Any discussion?
Um, I am just want to express gratitude for, for this grant. It looks like we're able to do good work in both buildings. Um, as a result of it, is this, um, does this go to a certain fund or program or budgetary line item?
At LHS, it goes to our prevention and wellness program.
For example, at Vernon Hills, we just had our freshman Rite Assembly. We, uh, we bring a speaker, a nationally known speaker in and some of our funds go directly towards that. So that's, that's, that's one example of the prevention and wellness, uh, area, how they spend the funds. So.
Right. And it's, so I'm assuming those funds are earmarked for prevention and wellness programs. Right. Well, we certainly express our gratitude for, um, having the, the grants. Thank you.
To the, thank.
Goodman Family Foundation.
Now we just have to amend those budgets up to eight thousand from the sixth. So, don't let me forget.
It's good news. It's a good amendment to have.
It's a good problem to have.
That's right.
All right, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item G, Amendment to the IBJI Strength Training Services Agreement.
So we've had a contract for strength services with the Illinois Bone and Joint Institutes, um, and. Uh, last year they were clear to us that they're having difficulty, uh, fulfilling the terms of our contract at the price that they agreed to. It was either they had to, um, just terminate the contract or we come to an agreement on a reduced amount of services. And so. Uh, the decision at the time was for Vernon Hills to drop that and for LHS to have a reduced amount. So. Um, that's the way we've been operating since, uh, school started, but we finally have the, um. The amendment language here, which is really what's presented to you to reflect those changes. So dropping the services at Vernon Hills, reducing the services at LHS.
Okay. We've had conversations about this a few times, so.
I, I don't remember talking about this. Did we talk about this in committee?
Several years ago. Yep. Over this.
I mean, just because I don't remember, it does not mean we did not do it. I'm not suggesting otherwise. We did. Okay, thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the amendment to the IBJI Strength Training Services Agreement.
Benjamin, so moved.
Drumkey, second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Further discussion? No. Okay, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Kukarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Uh, that is all for action items for facilities and finance. I'll turn it back over to.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we are moving on to section five. We have two present. Okay, thank you. Um, so we are moving on to section five. We have two presentations. Um, first is our academic performance data presentation. I will turn it over to Dr. Sanchez.
While they're taking the podium, I again want to compliment both uh, Ms. Eames and Dr. Sanchez on putting together a wonderful presentation. And this is the time to be talking about student achievement. The information we're presenting to you tonight is the data we have on our students that is not on the school report card. The school report card will be issued on Thursday. And so that's why we'll have a second round of data and information for the board at our November meeting. So that also serves to split this up into two chunks so that they're more digestible for you. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to the two ladies to tell us all about our student achievement.
Yes. And you took, you took a little bit of what I was going to do, but I just wanted to thank Charlotte for all of um, the hard work as we're trying to figure out what this reporting will look like annually and uh, being very nimble with all the requests and, uh, going back and forth and just, um, allowing, um, allowing me to use some of her data brain. So, thank you. And she's going to start us off.
Yes. So, um, as Dr. Herman said, we receive much academic performance data. Some of this will be on our report card coming out in a few days. So we're reporting on what will not be in the report card. You can go ahead and show all those. So we'll be reporting on PSAT data, ACT data, and our advanced placement data this evening. And SAT data will be coming next time. So the PSAT eight nine is given to all ninth graders in the spring of each school year. However, we have two years for which we did not give this test. So we didn't give it in school year 1920, and we didn't give it in school year 2021, uh, due to the pandemic. So we don't have comparison data for the PSAT eight nine, uh, but we will show what data we do have from, uh, 21, 22 and compare to some national norms. So we administered in April. And we had a really great participation rate. Uh, the district, uh, 128 total participation was 98.3%. 816 total students tested, and you can see the, uh, percentages from both schools as well. So the PSAT results are, uh, given in two sections. So there is, um, an English Language Arts section and there is a math section. And so it is reported as two separate scores. And each has their own benchmarks depending on the grade level. The highest possible points that a student can earn in each of the sections is 760 points. But you see the benchmark here for ninth grade on the ELA section is 410 points. Eighty seven point five percent of our district 128 ninth graders met that benchmark with an average score of 509 points, putting them in the, in the 76th national percentile for ELA. And on the math section, the ninth grade benchmark is 450 points. 68.9% of our D128 students met that benchmark with an average math score of 499, and that puts a, puts them in the 77th national percentile in math. 67% of our ninth graders met both the ELA and math benchmark and 10.6% of our ninth graders did not meet either of those benchmarks.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the PSAT 10, which is a slightly different version of this test, and it's given to all 10th graders. Um, as with the eight nine data, we, um, did not give it in the 1920 or the 2021 school year. So we, um, don't, don't have any, that data to compare to. Um, also like the PSAT eight nine, it is a practiced SAT that the students take um, the, after their freshman year. Um, and it's an opportunity for them to see how well they are performing in SAT, but also some of the areas that they may, uh, want to focus on and improve for the following year when they take the, um, SAT as juniors. Um, in 2022, we had a participation rate of 99% with a total of 817 students tested throughout the district.
I want to compliment the principals on making that happen. Those numbers are astounding. So again, thank you both for making sure that the students and families know how important this data is for us.
So we're going to take a look at some of the same data that we saw for our eight nine, um, but for the 10th graders. Um, so the ELA benchmark for 10th graders is 430 points. Um, 83.6% of our 10th graders met that benchmark with an average score of 526, putting our students between the 70th and the 73rd percentile nationally. Um, the math benchmark for 10th graders is 480 points. Um, 62.6% of our, um, 10th graders met that benchmark. Um, and while the average score, uh, with an average score of 513, putting our students between the 69th and the 72nd percentile nationally. Um, 60.5% of our 10th graders met both benchmarks and 14.3% of our 10th graders did not meet either benchmark.
All right. Next we'll be looking at some of our ACT data. So the ACT is not a required test, um, in the state of Illinois or at District 128. Uh, but we do give it to students who are interested in taking it. And during the 2021, 22 school year, 480 District 128 students took the ACT. These students are mostly juniors and seniors. We get a handful of sophomores that want to take it each year, but this is mostly 11th and 12th grade data that we have from last school year. Many ACT testing students take the test multiple times. So any of the averages that we are showing here are based on students' highest earned ACT score from that school year. So the table you're seeing here shows our overall averages. Uh, we also, uh, took out 11th grade and gave them their own average mainly because that's the group that also we'll be looking at when we look at SAT data. So that's a group of high focus. So LHS had an average of 25.3 points overall and 25.6 points for their 11th graders. And VHS had a 25.5 average overall and 25.8 for their 11th graders. That is out of a total of 36 points. 36 is the highest you can get on the ACT. We do have some comparison data here for the past two years of data. So you can see, uh, the data from the 2021, 22 school year and then the previous school year to that. We have that broken down into both schools and the district totals. So you can see we tested, uh, less students, uh, last year than we had the year before. And we did have a slight decrease in the average scores. So that is something we need to just be keeping our eye on. And, uh, possibly also look at some longer trend data to see what's going on there.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Um, do you think that the lower number of students tested is correlated to fewer schools requiring the ACT and SAT?
I think that's very likely. Yes. I think.
So that's a trend we might continue to see?
I think, I think that's very possible. Yes. I'd like to delve into our trend data over the past five years, which I have not seen yet, uh, to really kind of see how that trend is, is going, but that, that would be my guess. Um, it's just becoming a less popular test for students to take with the, the SAT. And sometimes now not even, not even any.
Right.
Becoming, uh, less of a popular option over time and especially post pandemic when we had years where students didn't test. So, so yes, I think we may continue to see that.
And will we continue to have benchmark data available so that we can see if our trend of fewer students taking the ACT and/or SAT is in alignment with, um, our peer districts, with the state, with the US data?
Yeah, certainly that is something we can track and, um, get the data for, especially from area schools. We can certainly track that down.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So a recent, one of the things we were very interested in, a recent article in the Chicago Tribune, uh, posted that the national average ACT score for 2022 graduates was 19.8. And that's the first time since, uh, since 1991 that the average fell below 20 points. So in looking at our data in comparison, I will say our data is not just tracking our 2022 graduates. I put the 11th and 12th graders together in a bucket, uh, because it just gave us a, a more overarching view of what's happening in our district. But as compared to that national average that came out, uh, we are ahead of that by quite a bit uh, with our 25.3 district average. And that's from 2021, 22. That puts our students in the 78th national percentile for those that took the test. And that same article also mentioned benchmarks and the fact that 42% of students who took the ACT nationally uh, did not meet any of the ACT benchmarks in four subject areas, English, reading, science, or math. In District 128, for our students who took that test, that number was only 6% of our students not meeting any benchmarks.
Um, so lastly, we're going to look at our, um, some of our AP or Advanced Placement, um, exam data. And so AP exams are taken by, um, students of all grade levels. In the spring of 2022, we gave over 3,300 AP exams. Um, a passing score is considered a three out of a maximum of five. Um, and we had 2,666 students achieve that. Which gave us a passing rate about 80.74%. Um, as a comparison, we gave 3,560 AP exams in the spring of 2021. So the number of exams given this past year, uh, decreased slightly, but the pass rate improved from 2021, which was 76.10%. In addition, 25% of the exams in 22, uh, in 2022 received the top score of a five. So this is an increase from that of 2021, when, um, 22% of AP exams taken in the district received a score of a five. Um, college board does not publish overall passing rate comparisons for schools or districts, but they do publish state and global comparisons per subject. Um, District 128 exceeded the state and global passing rates in every single subject in which we gave an exam. For this slide, um, and the four that follow, you'll see subject area on the left-hand column, and then you'll see 2022 state pass rates and the 2022 global pass rates. In the next two columns, you'll see the D128 pass rates for 2022 and 2021. In every subject, you'll see that D128 um, 2022 pass rates exceeded both the state and global pass rates and 26 of the 33 subjects. Um, 20 of the, the 2022 scores improved or remained the same as the 2021 scores. So you'll just have to leave it a little bit and then go to the next one. It's three tables. I think there's one more. Two more. No, one more. And so this concludes our presentation of academic performance data, um, that is not going to appear on the report card. Um, like Charlotte said, our report card will be publicly available on the 27th. So in November, we'll take a deeper dive into the metrics found on the report card, uh, which include the SAT. I think that's the big one that everybody's waiting to hear about. So we'll have that for you in November.
Any questions for Charlotte or Sunnya?
When, I do have a question. When you were comparing the ACT from 2021, 2021, and then 21, 22, was there a difference in the amount of junior seniors that would have, that you think might have been a difference in the decrease? Did you see more juniors taking it who had less uh, experience?
Um, at that data, I did not delve into that deeply, but that is a really good question that we could follow up on to really break down the grade levels and, and how, how the averages change depending on the grade levels. That is definitely something we could do.
And I just want to compliment, um, Charlotte for putting this report together, but this is the first time we're presenting the data to all of you in this way. And so this was our first attempt to say how much is enough without being so overwhelming. So as you're thinking about what about this format? What about this amount of data made sense for me as a board member to be able to digest? Are there some things that might be helpful? Um, obviously the data we'll be looking at is different in November, but even small suggestions that you might have, because again, we're putting this together so it makes sense to all of you and our public. So that you understand how our students are performing. Um, so again, thank you for this version of it, but we know with your feedback, it's going to get even better.
I really, oh, sorry. Please go ahead.
Um, I really appreciated your mention of gathering data on going to, uh, you know, take a, a long view at things. Um, I particularly would find data from the past to be helpful as well. Um, and I know you showed, you know, the last year or two, but I'm talking even from five to 10 to 15 and beyond years ago, just to kind of see where we came from and where we're going. I think it's important information to put out publicly so that, um, our community sees just kind of our, our growth trajectory over time. And, um, I have a feeling, uh, maybe it's presumptive of me, but I have a feeling it's on an upwards curve over time. Um, and that really speaks to, I think, the quality of educators we have, the quality of our administrators, and frankly, how wonderful our students are and how serious they are. Um, but I think that would be really relevant information to just frame all of this in, um, a different context. Thank you.
I just wonder if we have that data because the state has changed what constitutes knowing. So we had the Prairie State exam, then the SAT was part of that. Then we were also given the ACT Explorer Plan. Uh, so we have not had a consistent data set because over time it keeps changing. So be interesting to see how to tease that information out.
I will certainly delve into it and see what we do have and what comparisons we can make. And then looking to the future, um, now part of my role is to house this data. Uh, so I have, uh, uh, it's my first year, so I have my first year of data. And as, as I go, I will house all of that so that if, if we can't go back as far as we would like, uh, from before, at least we know that the future, we will be housing and storing that data so that we can make comparisons.
Is it also possible to group, uh, dual credit experiences, since these are like college level experiences to also include other courses that meet that college level criterion?
Absolutely. Yes.
And my question is not necessarily, I think.
We've just been having feedback that it could be hard for people to hear board members. I'm just going to gently remind you when it's hard to hear.
I think this was a really good presentation. Um, what got me thinking is how does this information fold into the strategic plan and the actions we are coming up with, like the 10% of students who did not meet a benchmark, for example. Um, or, you know, we see, you know, some areas where you have a 77% double. What, what will it take to get to, I don't know, 80? I'm just coming up with a number here, but. So I mean, that's kind of where my head went. And I think that was the goal of having such a presentation. So you can kind of think about the next step here.
I was going to say that I, I think I want the what's next. So I appreciate, and I, I mean, first of all, congratulations, because it seems like a very positive report. Uh, despite what we're hearing, it, it really seems like our kids have worked really hard, our teachers, you know, this is about the most back to normal. But I think I, I want as a parent and as on the board, I guess the next question is what next? And I don't know that that's a part of what your presentation is, but our discussion is, okay, now what's next? Where do we see? Anyway, that's. Well, I'll, I will be giving an update under superintendent's report, but some of these metrics will be used potentially as indicators of progress of our strategic plan. Um, but again, we wanted to make sure we were transparent with the data we have been receiving on student achievement. And you're right. Which one of these things are aligned to the actions? Um, you know, definitely some of the things you noted could be indicators of us closing the, the equity gap. Or, you know, some of the other kinds of things that could be measures in our strategic plan. So yes, um, the now what is? So yes, the now what is knowing we have this baseline? And then saying what are things that are going to be in their strategic plan? But also how are teachers in their PLCs going to use some of this data? To help say, okay, wow, it was really nonfiction reading. That was the challenge point based on the data we've received from ACT. So there's an opportunity to not just use it organizationally, but for teachers to use it.
Speaking of teachers, I want to give a special shout out to the AP teachers in the district for the great results for the 22 school year compared to the 21 school year. Because that increase is noted and appreciated, and we give credit where credit is due. So thank you to our AP teachers. I do want to amplify that having five-year data would really be helpful. I understand it's not available for the 19, 20, 20, 21 school year. But going back the two or three school years prior. I agree that context is very helpful for us to see over time. And I also want to amplify that it's important to say, okay, we have this data, so what? What are we going to do with it? You know, I've never wanted to have this data. I, I don't want us to chase our tails and have this data in and of itself drive our strategic plan. But I do think this is one indicator of how our strategic plan is serving students, among many indicators. So I really do appreciate seeing this data. I do like how it's presented. And I am very proud to see that although our ACT scores were down slightly. It certainly is significantly less than the national average. And with the pandemic and what we went through globally, I think a slight decrease is to be expected. It's noted, it's something we'd like to see change, but there's a variety of factors. Because it is optional. And because we, you know, at this point, don't know the percentage of juniors versus seniors taking it. Which is important because juniors have not learned some of the subject matter content on that test yet. But I appreciate it, and I appreciate both of you and the job that you did pulling this together. Any other questions or comments? Yes, please.
Something occurred to me. First of all, for me, it would be helpful to note what met means in some kind of quantifiable way. So perhaps an additional column with like percentage correct or how close to mastery, so to speak. That, that, for me, that would help, like what, you know, what did that exactly mean? But additionally, maybe somehow expanding on the idea that met means met or exceeded. Very small detail, but immediately when I saw it, I was like, wait, just met or in a range to, you know. Or, or then, you know, exceeded expectations or benchmarks in that, in that area. Thank you.
I also wanted to comment about the AP teachers. Because they have for years been using data-driven conversations to figure out what's going on in their classes. And they get this data every July. Like they're waiting for that data to come out so that they can see how their kids did. But then they look at how their courses do. And so the, the work that goes into tweaking AP courses to make them better and better every year. I, I just really appreciate that work. And, you know, teachers have been doing this for a long time, so it's, it's great that we're seeing this too.
Cardi, do you have something with that?
I just, I, I think the vernacular has changed so much in the last five years that you're talking. So when you say met's or exceeds, they don't even use it anymore. I'm, I'm not sure I'm using, I, so to me, the importance thing is going to be comparing apples to apples. So if we're going to look at data, I want to compare apples to apples. And that might put you in a bad position because I don't know that you have enough apples to compare. But I, that's what I want to compare. I, I would find that to be most beneficial.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item B. The social emotional panorama survey presentation. And it looks like our colleague, Dr. Ellis Bowen, is coming to the podium.
All right, so greetings, Board of Education and our Daring 128 community. Tonight, on behalf of the Student Services Department and the Data Services Department. Charlotte and I will be presenting to you the SEL survey results for fall, this fall, 2022. The social emotional learning survey was administered in September through our Panorama system. Out of 3,331 students, 200, I mean, 2,879 students completed the survey, which covered two categories with eight topics that are all aligned to our Illinois State Board of Education social emotional learning standards. These categories and topics are shown here on the slide. The survey was given to students for the first time last year in the spring of April, in which it was found that there was not enough time to provide individualized supports to students or to take a deep dive into the data. This year, we have created a schedule for surveys to be given with the intention to have time to identify students who are in need of support and to identify areas of strength, as well as programming, programming needs. This year, we are collecting baseline data. And we will use that data to create systems in which we are ensuring that all voices are heard and accounted for within our school community. The data provided by this survey and others will allow us to evaluate current resources, supports, and programming, and make recommendations moving forward.
So overall, our survey results from the SEL survey given this September were very positive. In the eight topic areas that the questions fall under, we saw growth in all areas. We also landed in the 80th to 99th percentile as compared to other schools nationally for seven out of the eight topics. We do have an opportunity to look even at questions. And on all but one question, responses improved or stayed the same. So this shows a brief overview of the eight topics covered on the survey. You can see those topics on the left side, followed by, the way this is reported is percent favorable. So the higher that number, the better. We want to see those high numbers. You also see the percentiles and how much we've changed since the spring SEL survey. So you can see that we have increases in all topic areas. These bottom five that are falling into the 60% favorable. Those are the topics we really want to keep our eyes on, because they are lower than the others. However, we do want to point out that they are still falling between the 80th and 99th percentile. Mostly aside from one category where we're in the 60th to 79th percentile. So we believe the improvement that we saw from April to September is twofold. First of all, I think our students are feeling the relief of, of having their first normal school year in several years. And I think that that shows in their responses. In addition, although we mentioned that we didn't have time in April to offer a lot of individualized supports based on results of this survey, we did take action in our buildings on certain themes that, that came up in the survey, such as student sense of belonging. And so we believe that those actions have had a positive impact on our students' social and emotional health. So overall, really positive story that this survey tells, but there is more and there is room to grow. And that's what we will talk about next. So on the spring SEL survey, there were some gaps in favorable responses between our overall student population and some specific student groups. And we can go ahead and put those groups up on the screen. These are the student groups that really stuck out in terms of having a gap in favorable responses to the overall population in April. And on the next slide, we're going to see that these student groups remained the same ones that stood out on the fall SEL survey. So those same student groups, and we're going to look at each one in a little bit more depth in a moment. But those same student groups are showing gaps. We noticed as well that in many cases, those gaps are growing. So there are some areas where we really need to focus our attention and, and put some systems in place to see some growth. As we go on to the next several slides, I want you to pay attention to the, the color of the squares. So the data is shown color-coded, and when you see an orange square that indicates that that student group in that topic had a less favorable response than the overall. And the deeper that color of orange, the greater the gap is. So we're going to see several slides that are similar, focusing on different student groups. So for our English language learners, in the spring, this group reported less favorably on six of the eight topics. And in the fall, this grew to seven of the eight topics. In addition, we saw that the gaps in favorable responses grew in all eight topics. So this is certainly a group that we need to keep our eye on and work toward improvement. Students receiving free and reduced price lunch. In the spring, these students reported less favorably on seven of the eight topics. And in the fall, this grew to all eight topics. We did see some improvement in three areas. The gaps decreased in emotion regulation, self-efficacy, and self-management. But note that other gaps did grow. So some encouraging things there, but certainly room for growth. Students receiving special education services in the spring reported less favorably on all eight topics. And this remained true on the fall survey. In addition, gaps grew in seven of the eight topics. You can see the deep orange there showing the large gaps. Female students report less favorably on five of the eight topics. And this was a particularly interesting group to look at because the data remained very similar between the two surveys. So female students reporting less favorably on the same five topics in the fall and gaps remaining very similar for our female students. Our Black or African-American students in the spring reported less favorably on all eight topics. We are encouraged to see that on the fall survey, this went down to seven. So we still have work to do there, but there were some improvements. Gaps grew in four areas, but they shrank in four others. So again, we see some encouraging improvements for this particular student group. But where we do have some concerns is the very extreme gaps and the growing gap. So this is another real area for focus. And Hispanic students in the spring reported less favorably on seven of the eight topics. And this grew to all eight topics on the fall survey. As with some of the other student groups we have looked at, we do see some improvement, which is encouraging. Gap shrank in self-efficacy, self-management, and supportive relationships. In other topics, though, the gaps grew or remained the same. So again, some encouraging things happening, but still a lot of room for improvement in this student group.
All right, so how the results, how the results of this SEL survey are being used? So the SEL survey is not anonymous. And this allows the buildings to begin to identify specific students with, for individual needs, as well as to pinpoint students that may be in need of immediate support. And so immediately after this information was released, which was within two weeks of the survey being given. We began to work with the students who were color-coded red and also free responses that required immediate attention. Student, students identified in these two areas were given support and resources through their learning support teams. As you can see, here is the color-coded chart that is representative of our students and how they performed or responded on the survey. This color-coded chart, again, is specific to student reports. For each student, the more they were able to answer the question favorably, they were in the green area. However, as you move into the yellow and the red, these were our students who did not answer favorably to the questions given. So in addition to the students that were identified in the red area or through their free response for additional assistance, our next task will be to identify students who resided in that yellow area. To ensure that we are proactive with providing individualized support and programming needs. As we look at some of the areas that ranged below that 75% that was on some of those earlier sides, such as emotion regulation and growth mindset. We are going to continue to explore methodologies that will allow us to provide strategies to teachers and use the data to offer more universal SEL activities and strategies throughout the academic setting. In addition to that, we are going to begin to use this baseline data to audit and evaluate our tier-two interventions that are currently in practice. The SEL, SEL survey was reviewed and also discussed during our mental health and wellbeing action planning. It is, the data is being used by the teams to target, to develop, develop targets for that action plan. Interestingly enough, although the SEL survey was not available during the initial conversations of the Equity Action Planning team. The qualitative data collected through surveys given to team members and through our staff and student focus groups on behalf of the Equity Action Planning Committee gave context and depth to the results presented from this survey. This has led to some overlap in themes and objectives identified by both teams, such as the need to create social, emotional, and belonging cultures in our classrooms and in our school. And the need for student voice from students that reflect the composition of our student body with intentional activities to create an authentic, inclusive environment. This is further confirmed when we have examined the SEL data by subgroup. In response to both, the action teams are utilizing this data to develop action plans that will begin to provide students, staff, as well as our parents with knowledge and learning that will not only address the identified areas of growth, but also continue our mission and vision to cultivate daring students. Furthermore, it will allow us to further inform our practices to serve the whole child and provide guidance towards our ongoing efforts to advance and nurture a positive and inclusive environment. Before I conclude this presentation, I would like to give a special thanks to Charlotte for gathering the data and also putting this presentation together. This concludes our presentation of the SEL data. And we welcome at this time, questions or comment from our board.
Again, thank you very much. This is really eye-opening. And I look forward to getting more of these. I had sort of one tactical question. Do you have any students that fall in more than one category, like an English learning, English language learner who also is on the, you know, the free lunch program? And if that's the case, which category do they fall in?
So the way that Panorama reports this data to us is by those categories, and it does not combine them. So certainly there are students falling into multiple, in which case those students are being counted in all of those groups. So if, if a student is an English learner, they're going to be counted in that group. If they're also on free and reduced price lunch, they'll be counted in that group. When we look overall, they're only counted once.
Along those lines, are the subgroups self-identified?
No, these are based on the information that we have in Power School. So with this survey, because it is non-anonymous.
So with this survey, because it is non-anonymous, we upload the students from our Power School data. And so all of that demographic information that is attached to the student in Power School becomes attached to their Panorama survey.
I see. So some of these other surveys, because I appreciate we use this and we use some other surveys as well. The uh Culture and Climate Survey as the SEL, Equity and Inclusion, Illinois Youth Survey, Five Essential Survey. Is there a place for LGBTQ students to self identify so that we can keep an eye on that subgroup? Because that's a another group that I know that that we want to pay attention to. Where, where are we getting that data from?
So um on the Illinois Youth Survey, out of all of the surveys that you mentioned, is the only survey at this time that um allows students to self identify um as an LGBTQ plus. Um and so even with that survey, it is very limited. Um and the debt, the data that they initially sent to us. However, um we have uh sit been working with the University of Chicago to provide us with more demographic data and a more thorough report so that we can begin to look at those demographics. However, even within that um in that report, there's not an area outside those. Um I believe there's like four or five questions on that survey that has that um area for that cohort of students.
So that concerns me. So systemically, um I wonder, is there a way for someone, for a student to self identify as LGBTQ? So that we can track that data voluntarily, ask, here's a chance for you to voluntarily identify yourself. So maybe it appears in Power School if they choose. Um how, how can we be sure that we're capturing that important subgroup?
Yeah, so we can um begin to look into that um for the surveys. And one of the things that we are currently working in Power School on is um for those students who have um identified and want to be recognized um in our, in our system. We are looking at Power School to find an area or field where that can be um noted in that, in the uh system. However, what we will have to work with Panorama on is how to um merge that field over into that survey area because it's not picked up in the demographics.
Certainly, and I, we rely on you to figure out how, how to do that and how it's appropriate to do that. Because obviously there's um, it requires a degree of of sensitivity to the issues of that particular community, but um I, and I, I'm not trying to single out any particular subgroup.
I know we have uh student organizations and I know our school counselors and social workers work very hard to help students navigate um some of the sexuality challenges that they might be facing in high school in terms of sexual identity or other things like that. Um so I don't think we have a field in Power School right now where we're tracking it. But I'm very confident in our school counselors and other student services staff that they have a very robust description of those students and students who are demonstrating some additional needs.
And and Dr. Herman, if I'm not mistaken, I believe there's a new state law that requires us as a school um to give students the opportunity to declare that information as part of the registration process. Um and I know that all the schools in Illinois will have to do that. So the systems in terms of how we identify that and track that information will um be something we're working to develop.
Yes, so that goes back to the earlier conversation about um finding. Right now, that law, we've been um, it has been postponed for another year, so we have another year um to work on that system, but um in an effort to be proactive um and to work out that um systemic structure um for that identification uh for our students in that community. Um that's what we are working on.
Thank you.
Could you uh clarify something for me? Um in the social and emotional learning category topics, there were five listed. And as I was reviewing the, the data, um I just would really appreciate some clarification as to kind of the definitions of both social awareness and self efficacy. Even if you have some off the top of your head example questions that were posed.
So um not in the presentation, but there is a report that um was also posted. Um and that, the uh, the definitions, I believe, are in that report um as well as every single question that was asked in each category, in each topic area. So, so that is available to you um in, in that report.
Thank you.
Do students get uh feedback individually on this? Do they, once they've taken the survey, do they interface with this individually in any way?
So that is part of the system that we are working on in regards to what that communication is going to look like. Um so um with the initial feedback, um we um really worked with our students that fell into that red um category as well as students who um show um some areas of concern in their free responses. So we did have conversations with them in regards to the survey because then we also wanted to make sure that um they were supported as well as they um were provided some resources. Um our next um thing that we are looking at is beginning to look at, of course, our students that fell in yellow. But then overall, as a team, really beginning to work on how we can communicate um this information out, not only to all of our students, but then also making sure that we can get this information into the hands of our teachers um as well as um strategies um and and instructional practices that they can implement within the classroom. So we're, we're working on it.
Thought of uh one question here, but you mentioned um you reach out individually to those students who may have like a really uh, uh, a red, for example. Uh, do you also reach out to those families and get the families involved to address what's going on?
So I believe it was a combination of both. Um in some cases, um parents were involved. And depending on exactly how the question, I mean, how the student responded and that area of concern, um it may have required, that may or may not have required that communication with the parent as well too. I don't have that specific information, but I can provide that to you, you know, out of there.
Thank you.
One more quick question. Um students who have had some adverse childhood experiences as an aggregate group, do we have any way of either allowing them to self identify? Or do we collect that information and then use that in this as well?
That is a really great question. At this time, we don't. Um but I foresee us doing some um um triangulating that data um between those students and the SEL students.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That, that may or may not be the last comment. Any, any other questions or comments?
I'm so sorry. I have one more because now I'm looking at that other document. Okay, so it says, you know, responded favorably as kind of the, the measurement. But in some of the categories, that's confusing to respond favorably. So does favorably mean different things for different questions? Does it mean affirmative yes? Or could you expand?
Yes, that's a very good question. Um so the, the fa- the favorable responses are, I guess the easiest way to think of it is those are the responses we hope to get. So depending on the way the question is, is asked. Uh so for instance, a question where we want a student to say, yes, always, or most of the time. Usually those top two responses are going to be marked favorable and that's determined by Panorama. And then if we have a question that is opposite, where we want the students hopefully to be saying never or almost never, those bottom two will be marked as the favorable ones. And just so it does depend on the question and Panorama takes care of that for us. Um and so we just see that overall.
So can I give you the example question kind of with the percentage? Um it says during the past week, how often did you feel worried? And it said thirty-nine percent responded favorably. So.
So, yeah, so that would be um, and you know, always, I don't know what the exact choices were. They, they do change per question, but so it would be, you know, an always, most of the time, some of the time, that type of thing. So uh we, we would, so a favorable response for that one would be a almost never or.
Rarely, yes. Okay, thank you for the.
So a thirty-something would be a concern area.
Right.
For that particular question.
Yes, yes, correct, yes. I had to also wrap my head around that when I first delved into this Panorama data. But they do, uh the way it is reported is um that they, they do that for us. And so we can take that somewhat at face value, that, that it's showing us um uh favorable depending on the question.
Okay, what other questions or comments do we have? Thank you for your excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the presentations for this evening. Um we're in our informational section number six and I will turn it over to Dr. Herman for the superintendent's report.
Sure, um if we could pull up the presentation for strategic plan update, Bo? Wonderful. So um as we talked about in the summer, I wanted to make sure that we had regular updates to the board on our strategic plan process. And reminding us in the big picture, last year, we spent a lot of time looking at data and setting our goals. And right now we are in that phase um uh from August to December where we are designing, how are we going to implement? What are going to be the actions we're going to take to meet those goals? Next slide. And a reminder also that within that, we are really trying to honor the process of exploring many options before we decide on exact action steps. So while we were looking at the data last spring and over the summer, we did some research. We had some possible areas. We had our institute day on the ninth of September where all staff were able to give us feedback, look at the data and say, here's some things that I'm, I'm finding promising. Um and then we have teacher volunteers and administrators who are serving to make meaning of all of those things um to be prepared in December and January to bring those detailed action plans. Next slide. So one of the things that I wanted to remind you is that we um, this is one of our first debut viewings of some of our new logos. Um we had um a version that was homegrown and um we've now used our daring colors to make sure that it's aligned with other daring um uh logos that the district has. Um but that, right now, we see the overlap. And we had some tentative goals, but that's what we're going to be populating is reminding you um what action steps are going to fall into each one of those categories. And in July, when we had this conversation as a board, you challenged us to find areas where one action plan might be hitting multiple goal areas. Again, really making sure that we're not overwhelming our staff or students and that the action plans we'll be presenting to you are focused and clear. Um next slide. So I wanted to give a brief update of the three goal areas. And uh Yasenia and Aman are here to speak to theirs and then I'll speak to the one that Larry's leading. So we have exploring multiple pathways.
Yes, and so um in our um exploring multiple pathways, which um Charlotte also helps, helps on. Um we've met with the folks, we have our fourth meeting this week and we've been able to um come together on eight themes or topics. You see seven of them listed up there. There is one that isn't listed and that is community education. Because that is something that will have to do with anything and everything that we do. So that will be overarching over um all of them. So this coming, um so we have exploration and exposure, which involves providing opportunities for students to see and understand the various pathways they can take. This might include inviting guest speakers, having career fairs or providing mentorship to students as they are um so that they are exposed to and can explore the pathways available to them. We also have partnerships, uh which involves creating partnerships with community members that will allow us to offer things such as job shadowing or internships. Um and then we have course selection and graduation requirements, which I think will go hand in hand. Um and course selection looks at um involve, it involves balancing students' course selections and helping them connect their high school academic plan to their post-secondary goals. Um graduation requirements um involves the district looking at how we currently frame graduation requirements and how we incentivize students to take certain paths. Um then we also are uh looking at the CRC rebrand, um involves changing the focus of the CRCs.
Remind everyone what the CRC is?
Thank you.
Career Resource Center. And they had a great presentation two weeks ago. But I'm not going to give you any of the secrets yet. Um they were open to um, to making sure that we're shifting the focus slightly away from only college to a more pathways resource center or that provides various resources to students that will help them learn uh about and choose their pathway. Um following uh that, we have pathway plans, involves students, um involves helping students develop a post-secondary plan that can be aligned to their high school coursework in an effort to set them up for post-secondary success. And finally, we um have the category we're calling Diploma Plus. And this involves opening options that will set our students up for post-secondary success, including expanding dual credit course options, um certification pathways and alternative options for students whose life situations um may make, that may make the traditional pathway more difficult for them. And so each of them presented two weeks ago and they have a lot of great ideas in each of the categories. So this week we will be distilling all of the great ideas and coming to um some that are, you know, we would like to do them while we can't. So we're going to come to a consensus on which ones we're going to tackle in each of the categories.
Thank you so much. Your team is doing excellent work. Next slide. Um I'll go ahead and deliver the information for this one. Um Larry, our Director of Equity and Inclusion, um is leading this work with our equity coordinators. And we do have our consultant who's leading our equity planning work. Um and so when we talk about the work we've done previously of looking at the data and now having opportunities um in five strand areas. So um Dr. Yvette Dublier is leading us through a process. And we have our fourth meeting coming up this um uh Friday where we will be again rounding out our action plans and then deciding which ones are going to be part of the whole strategic plan that we monitor very publicly and report to all of you on. Which ones maybe are going to be more internally taken care of? Um and which ones are good ideas, but we can't do everything in the next five years. Um so wanted to make sure that you understood that really very focused ideas about engagement, about um making sure that professional learning is embedded. Um and not just to have professional learning be a separate thing, but each of these action plans is going to have some required professional learning that goes along with it. So um foreshadowing what you'll be seeing in December and January. Um it goes back to one of our foundational uh prints or a strategic boundary that we said is we will not approve any program unless it is funded and unless it has professional learning. So the plans that we're developing now, the action plans, um all will have accompanying expectations for professional learning and that's why it's going to take time for each of them to be rolled out. The next slide is for Aman and Health and Wellbeing.
All right, so for um the Health and Wellbeing, our um primary goal is to.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. I'm new. All right. Um so for the um Mental Health and Wellbeing Committee, um one of our primary goals is to um begin to seep um SEL and Mental Health and Wellbeing into every nook and cranny of our academic community. Um we want to create common and coherent experiences um for both students and staff um by investing in um. um by investing in um SEL um in uh instruction, curriculum, and programming. Um, in addition to that, we also want to um provide rich and meaningful um opportunities um for um members of our community, but in particular for our students um to make sure that these practices or and or um uh strategies are implicit. Um, so that um it may start off as them knowing that it's SEL, but hopefully within um the three or four years as we um begin to implement the plan that they don't even know that it's happening because it's just part of what they do um inside of um our uh and within our district. Um, so uh we are also, we just had our uh third session on last Thursday in which we had our presentations as well, too. Um, during that um time, we had seven areas that we were um actually looking at. Um, and after the presentation of those seven areas, um we landed on three. Um, and these are tentative because we have not confirmed um these areas. Um, so the first area that I want to briefly talk about is comprehensive SEL programming and partnerships. Um, and so in that area, we are really looking at our overall SEL programming. So really beginning to look at increasing our partnerships with um local and surrounding agencies. But also one of the big um ideas or themes is to look at mental health and first aid for all students and all staff. Um, and uh the next area, we are looking at the creation and implementation of a tier-one curriculum and instructional practices. Again, um in most school districts, they look at placing this into a class and or an advisory period. Um, which that may be the way that we began. But hopefully, within the five years or by the time we begin our next strategic plan, it you will see it whether you are um in extracurricular activities, whether you are in an AP class um or an EL class um of those uh SEL um instructional practices. So um what we are looking at is first and foremost PD um for our staff. Um, and then looking at the creation of lessons and practices, again, aligns that is the SEL standards. Um, which um will also include some restorative practices um and other um opportunities as well outside of the classroom. Um, for all of our areas, um two of our non-negotiables for anything and everything that we do, meaning that it is going to be included um in those target areas will be PD for staff. Um, actually, it's three. Um, identification of metrics to evaluate progress of our programs. Um, and then progress on our strategic planning rollout. And then last but not least, looking at identifying various vehicles of learning for our parents and community. Um, our last area um that we um landed on is the identification of building needs to deliver mental health and well-being. Um, and so in this conversation, um we were looking at the where. So where will this happen? If we bring more community partnerships into the building, where are they going to meet? Um, if we are going to create um programming for mental health and well-being, where what space would that reside in? So actually beginning to do an audit of our buildings and our space um to see what's available um and what we are able to do and what we would need to do in the short term as well as long term. But also, um not only building needs um in a sense of the physical building, but then also looking at time, because this means an increase of professional development, not only for this strand, but also for exploring um multiple pathways as well as the equity action planning. So time, time, and time. Um, so um a lot of that conversation went into looking at flexible time and advisory. But then in our group, the biggest conversation is if that doesn't happen, how do we get this work done? So that will be the area that we will talk about that. Um, last but not least, as I stated up there, one of the things that we also want to make sure that we do is we have student um voice included in this. Um, and so looking at ways to incorporate that beyond focus groups to have them consistent and ongoing. Thank you.
So we have one other good news to share. I know I've previewed it, but um Mary has been taking the lead on communicating our strategic plan and making sure that the public is aware of the good work that our community has done um now, so that they know our goals, and in the spring to have all of the action plans once they're approved. So we will be having a strategic plan mailer that will be going out uh in about a week, so the end of um October, beginning of November. Um, and it is highlighting the work that we've done, our goals, our our strategies. Um, it's a similar to what D seventy-three published last summer. Um, although we decided to break it up into two things, a mailer and then the whole plan will follow. Um, so it's a part one and part two. Um, but we're very, very proud. That's the actual front cover. Um, Mary, do you want to add any other updates to? Oh, I guess that one other thing I can think of is in addition to this mailer, we will also be queuing parents to go to the website. So the website is being redesigned to accompany this where our goals and our metrics and all of those things will be housed there as they're developed. Um, so the mailer, the website, um and other things to make sure that our daring logo is aligned with our strategic plan. So very excited about that. And that concludes my update.
Excellent. I'm very excited to see the uh the mailer. Any questions for Dr. Herman?
This is all very exciting to see. Yes.
There's just so much work that's going on in this place. Oh, my goodness, if you sit at this whole meeting and see how much is going on. Thank you all.
That's, yeah. Well said. Okay, um, we're going to move on to uh board comments and events. Um. Anyone have anything they'd like to share? Um, any learning they've done, anything they've attended? Um, please.
Uh, on, I think, was it Monday already? I'm sorry, I didn't have this handy. Looking at my calendar. Oh, would it would help if I were in the proper week. I'm not sure. Someone can tell me what day it was on. They're all getting mixed up right now, but I had the opportunity to attend um Ms. ML's poetry reading.
Last Thursday, yeah.
Thank you.
Thursday.
Yeah. Honestly felt like a week ago already. Um, it was so lovely to hear these student voices um in the poetic form, and even if students were not feeling comfortable and getting up in front of the group to perform their poem, um, you know, there was someone standing by, ready to read it before the audience. Um, and I just, I was just in awe of the bravery and the candidness and really the the sheer talent of these students um for sharing their family's stories. They wrote poems um based on a a famous poet's poem that explored her own um ancestral and family roots and basically a who who I am, who I came from poem. Um, and particularly meaningful to many of these students because their families um you know, had had immigrated here um and were trying to live their version of the American dream. And so it was just so lovely to be a part of it, to be invited, to see um the wonderful work our students and teachers are doing in the classroom. So thank you to Ms. ML for including us board members, and I look forward to more events like it in the future.
Yeah, that's uh Wendy Meister Luria, just in case, you know, the crowd is not familiar with her handle. Yes, Ms. ML.
I was also able to attend that the first period session for that. And yes, it was um heartworm, heartwarming. It was also, I admired the courage of all these students who spoke about, you know, their experiences. And I enjoyed the snacks that were given out by the special education students. Um, that was very nice to see. So thank you for inviting us.
Yes, thank you for including us. And I was bummed I had to work Thursday, but I'm sorry um that I missed it because it sounds like it was really a a special event and more to come. So. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
Going on an AP environmental science field trip tomorrow.
Oh, where are you going?
Sewage treatment plant.
No, skip and a jump. LHS apes.
LHS.
Okay.
And drinking water purification, but sewage is really where it's at.
Fabulous. Well, you'll have to report back to us and let us know how your.
Can hardly wait.
Tour. Wow, that's so great. How did you get to be included in that?
Uh, well, I taught apes and uh when Jennifer Khan was um figuring out what to do with her class uh while I was still teaching it, I invited her to go on all of our field trips so that that would give her. So she's paying me back. She's allowing me to go see sewage. Did I mention sewage?
John, that was the very first field trip I took my students on when I was a science teacher.
Outstanding.
Charles Sewage Department.
It is.
There's so much going on.
There's.
Well, people need to understand infrastructure.
Great. Well, we look forward to hearing about sewage. Um, as Dr. Herman mentioned, um, we attended the ISB Lakes Dinner. Um, it was very interesting. Um. Denise and I actually had a follow-up conversation because one of the presentations was about um advocacy. And how school districts are involved in advocating at the state level, at the local and state level um for educational topics. Um, and it's something I think that we're curious to find out how that aligns with our strategic plan. And how other districts that have engaged very in a very focused way with advocacy have tied that to either their strategic plan or their mission or their goals. Um, so we may have more to come on on that topic.
One other highlight, um, Dr. Michael Carner, the county ROE gave a update of like the a a year summary of the work that's been accomplished, and we were all just really uh impressed um by the progress he's making moving forward, tangible, but also like the culture and climate. Um, the superintendents. Um, again, having worked, having been new, he's the only person I've worked with. Um, but many superintendents are really thankful for the leadership and the learning opportunities that he's bringing to administrators, teachers, um and collaboration. So I I think that's another really important thing. At the Lakes Division meeting, we get to hear um, you know, from our peers, but also what's going on across the county.
Yeah, it was fascinating to learn. I did not know what the regional uh district offers uh from a program standpoint, and um it was really great to hear. I'm really impressed with what they're doing at the regional level, as well as the million-dollar grant that Dr. Carner secured for work across the county. So um, yeah, that was that was um a really interesting part. Um, in addition to the award, which we may or may not have mentioned that our board received. Yeah, okay. Um, so we are going to forego the IASB report um because Dr. Badson is not here this evening. He is our ISB delegate. However, it's important to note that at our next committee meeting, we're going to be discussing the resolutions. So please take a look at them. Um, that will be the place for us to discuss them before the joint annual conference where he will be voting on them on our behalf. So it's important for us to to take a look at those. Um, and I believe, Carrie, you said no CEDOL report?
Nothing today, no.
Great.
I just want to give an update, though. I think there is a board meeting later this week.
For CEDOL, um possibly in practice.
Okay.
But not a governing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Um, we do have some staff members who will be attending a CEDOL meeting on Friday. And I just think it's important.
Someone's right is here.
Yes, definitely. Um, and an impatient driver.
Yes. Or they won something.
Yeah, that.
Oh.
Oh.
The the Friday meeting is the CEDOL goal development meeting. And so CEDOL is seeking to define goals of the uh stakeholders so that they can continue to provide excellent um exceptional resources and services. And so Dan Stanley, Kelly Hartwig, and I will be attending on behalf of District 128.
And there is an exec board meeting on Thursday.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
And um I just think it's important that the whole board know that because there has been some communication between CEDOL and the special education directors and the superintendents. Um, just really doing an audit of their ability to hire and retain high-quality staff and their ability to continue to deliver high-quality services. So that's why they are having this meeting on Friday. Um, and so, you know, our continued partnership with them is, we definitely want to maintain that. But similarly to how we brought back our transition students, other districts in the county are also bringing some of their programs back. So CEDOL is having to make some adjustments. So um we'll have more information to share. Um, but just wanted to be very transparent about that.
Thank you. Um, I know that there is a Vernon Area Energy Commission meeting coming up. Are we?
Tonight.
Oh, it's tonight.
So I I told them that we wouldn't be there.
Okay, perfect. I'm sure they'll be able to get us the information.
Yeah, Joel Finfer is the president of D one twenty-five, and he's been sending me information each time.
Thank you for maintaining our contact with that group. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to mention, um, Dr. Herman had already said the um D one twenty-eight Foundation for Learning Big Event is November fifth. Um, I know all of us that are um planning on attending have bought tickets. Um, we're very grateful for our partnership with the foundation because they support our students and need fund at both buildings as well as um our um innovation grants for teachers. Um, and this is the big annual fundraiser that will determine how much um they're able to add to their coffers to support that great work. So we encourage everybody in the community to uh buy tickets and or raffle tickets um so that they can support uh this great event and the wonderful work that the foundation does. Um, and we, last thing that we'll discuss um in our regular board meeting agenda is future agenda items. We do have a list. Um, it's noted in public con- content. So I'm not going to read everything on that list that's coming up in committee and for the regular board meeting. Um, as I said, based on the um student board reports, um we'll look to the administration um and the DLT um to present us with any follow-up that they think is appropriate. Um, the board is eager to learn more. Um, any other future agenda items you'd like to mention?
No, I really appreciate the students and letting us know what things you would like us to be talking about. There there's, like you said, there's so much good work going on. You highlighting some of the things that are important to students. So as you look at this list, if there are some things that you would want to advocate, we have on future agendas. I know at our, one of our planning meetings, um, we talked about different student groups to come in and present, and I think you received an email summarizing sort of that. So I think that's one of our next steps is to map out second semester, who might be groups that are presenting. But we would love to hear your suggestions for things that should be for the board um that students think are important.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and last but not least, it doesn't appear on this list, um, but in our um closed session minutes from September that we approved, we did um discuss uh the superintendent's goals. It was our intention to discuss it uh on the October committee meeting. And uh again, tonight, but we missed that opportunity. Um, so that we will add that to the November um committee and then discuss it. Because I know Dr. Herman has always been very um supportive and wanting um her goals to be very public and very transparent. Um, and it it is one of the most important things that we as a board do. So um I just wanted to note that we did miss that opportunity in October as we thought we would have, but we will be discussing it, yeah, in November committee and the regular board meeting. Um, so if we have nothing further, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn in closed session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
Uh, Drumkey, motion to convene in closed session to discuss pending litigation, five ILCS one twenty dash slash two subsection C subsection eleven.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Carmichael.
Oh, we have plenty of seconds. I think we'll give it to Rooney. So thirty seconds. Okay, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Holcarney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Great. Motion passes. We'll convene in closed session in five minutes at nine thirty-seven.
May I have a motion?
Get your sneakers on and roller skate.
Let me know when you're ready.
Carmichael, move to return to open session.
It is, and can I have a second, please?
Rooney, second.
Right, we have a motion and a second to return to open session at 9:54 PM. Roll call please. Wait, are we doing voice vote for both? I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, we don't need a roll.
We don't need, all we need is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries. May I have a motion set in a second to adjourn the meeting?
Carmichael, move to adjourn.
Kulkarni, second.
Great, we know that at 9:55 PM, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.